This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, let's take mayor items and I'll bring that to the top because we weren't sure if Katie would be here or not. So you were able to move all your meetings around so you could make it?
Yes, yes.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sorry.
Does, have you met everybody here?
Um, yes, I think almost everyone, I'm not sure.
Brian Dewitts, I'm the executive director for the Adirondack Rail Trail Association.
Great, hi Brian, Katie Brennan.
Katie, nice to meet you.
Okay, and Katie was sworn in today, I believe?
Yes.
Okay, so Katie is now an official board member, with the exception that if she wants to stay with us, she has to start running in two months. Nothing but fun. Okay, we'll start right up and with clerk items. First one is our public hearing and regular board meeting minutes from September 19th. Does anybody have any questions on that, or do I hear a motion to accept?
I'll make the motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Accepted. Regular board meeting minutes from October 17th.
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
Peter can't second because he doesn't think so really.
Oh, yes.
Did we get a?
We did, that's right.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
Oh, yeah.
And I vote aye as well, so we have a majority there.
Great.
Yep.
Okay, and item C is electric department promotion. Let's see, number one is Jacob Corson to a third-class lineman, step two. Apparently he's committed or completed all of the requirements in his six-month probation period. And he is being recommended by Kimball Davy at a rate of $27.06 per hour. Do I have a motion to accept?
Sub moved.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
And then our second one for the electric department is Noah Travaris, also third class, step two. Finished his sixth month and same thing, 27.06.
Sub moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And item D is, what's your name, sorry? He is the pre-figuration of Eugene Jutrock. After 14 years of service to the village, we thank him very much for his service and we wish him well in whatever he's looking to do next. Do I have a motion to accept Eugene Jutrock as a pre-figuration?
With his record? Sub moved.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well. Okay, and then the next item is item F, new labors. It's, well, it doesn't matter, we can take these together if you want, they're both.
You have to make the appointment, so I'm going to separate.
Okay, I will make the appointment of Joshua Mett for a labor for DPW. I do, I would say the title and pay would be set by the CSA contract.
That's right.
And there it is at the bottom, $17.56 an hour. I look for a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Welcome. Joshua Mett, okay, and then the same thing for Nicholas.
Ork.
Ork, same thing, the $17.56 an hour.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Welcome Nicholas as well. Okay, and then item H is the 2023 Northern Adirondack Cone Conference. I believe that's for the fire department?
Yep, it's specifically for Justin Roy and Brady Hayes. It's right here in Lake Placid, so we're just paying for the conference, not for any overnight stay.
Okay. Motion to approve?
Sub moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. And item I declares surplus inventory. Does anyone know what the surplus is?
Your list.
Your list?
Yeah.
I guess you could just let Lauren needs to know if she wants to know.
Okay, it's, it's in the package she receives.
Perfect, okay. Do I have a motion to approve the surplus?
Sub moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Probably talk about how you're going to sell that. You've declared a surplus, but now how are you going to?
Well, go into the like, hopefully into the paper here.
Yes.
Yeah.
Commercially reasonable way.
In a commercially reasonable way.
Get some money back.
Anything else I should say?
No, I think, yes, we'll do it as we had previously promoted in the paper, online, and have big openings.
Very good. And item J is the fire department parade request.
Yep, there's actually five of them coming up, starting with this week Veterans Day. Then there's the Serenac Lake Christmas Parade on December 2nd, where we are the ruling champions for best-in parade. Then the Alceval Forks Christmas Parade, December 3rd, Lake Placid Holiday Stroll, December 10th, and Santa Parade, December 11th. These are all obviously pending, no emergencies going on at the time.
Make the motion to approve?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. And item K is C and G hockey flags.
Yep, 10 flags for five events, December through April. And they've discussed with Kimball where paying them.
Okay. And a motion to accept?
Sub moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. And item L must be the Veterans Day Parade itself, that's on November 11th, I'm assuming?
Yep. Yeah, this Friday, stepping off from Monday at 11:00 AM, back to what it was pre-COVID, having had this in a few years. Hopefully people will come out and support them.
For others' stay.
And then at the Legion at probably 11:00?
11:20 approximately.
Oh, 11:20, quite. Okay, very good. Motion to approve?
Sub moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes as well. And item M, proposed joint housing committee plan. I remember you, we've seen it, we've had it, do you want to say any words on it?
No, what they're just looking for is an adoption to move forward, and I think one of their first goals is to look at creating the veil somewhat of a deep restriction that they may put in place, but they do need some sort of formal adoption by both boards. The town did it last week, so we need to do it.
We're going to model more like Old Forge?
Well, it's going to be a combination of whatever works because we had a meeting with Dan Kieferbach last week. There is some challenge, they've foreseen some challenges.
Of course. It's a starting point, what you're saying.
It is, yep.
Did we get a first, or motion to accept?
So Doc? Second.
I'm all in favor?
Aye.
Anything else to come from clerk?
No additions today.
Okay, and in treasury, we just have the warrants and affidavits, who would take a wild guess that trustee Kelly looked them over. Thank you very much, as always. Motion to accept?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
She will hopefully train to do it too.
Or maybe well, she's, she's great at that too.
What is going?
Do you know if anything else was to come from treasury?
I don't think so, I think she would have called him if there was. He was with her sick doctor today.
Okay. Anything to come up under new business?
Probably are.
What's that?
Probably are.
Yeah, just be a good chance to jump in if you'd like.
Yeah, we're, we're excited. Again, Brian Dewitts, the new executive director for Adirondack Rail Trail Association. Wednesday, we, Wednesday, we were at the groundbreaking ceremony with the DEC Department of Transportation and Officer General Services from state. And just really excited to partner with the village and all the municipalities along the trail, figure out how we can make it a success and how it can benefit the village and everyone who lives, works, and lays along the way.
So at this point, since it's, it's going to happen, it's happening, the next step is to market it. Bruce is in charge of that, so if we spend all this money without marketing.
Exactly, yeah, so I, so right now, we're positioned to lead that effort, and I think we're, we're speaking with, we're speaking with Bruce, we're speaking with DEC and APA on kind of coordinating and thinking that effort, so everyone's kind of moving in unison. We have the same messaging in place, but I think we're positioned to kind of lead that effort and coordinate what the marketing looks like. I think we'll work with everyone on that, because I think that everyone has kind of their own strengths to, to marketing, so we really want to leverage what everyone does well and does best, but I think we're positioned to kind of coordinate those efforts.
I mean, did your group research other rail trails marketing?
Yeah, 100%, yeah. So we're, we've looked at, we've looked at trails within New York, we've looked at the MRSA trail system, we've looked at other trails within Vermont, Kingdom Trails, we've looked at a lot of New England, and the entire rest trail corridor. That coalition, we've really been nationwide, just to see what works in terms of marketing, what works in terms of coordinating with neighbors and those who live along the way, businesses, municipalities, really looking at everything to figure out, not just how to market it, because we can, we've shown that with the IBCs, we can, we can market, market them and make it work, but we also want to work with the businesses and municipalities to make sure the infrastructure is in place to help support the, the people who are utilizing the trail, so that they, they know where to park, they know where to go to the bathroom, they know if I want to grab a famrich or an ice cream cone, where to go. So, so we're kind of working on all fronts to make, to make the infrastructure ready and available for, for trail users at the same time we're marketing it, because the one without the other just creates a nightmare.
Yeah, is there still talk about making restrooms at the train station, here in Lake Placid, the train station?
At, at, it would be separate from the historical site, but we're working with, with a group right now, Open Space Institute, to, to, to build that.
To trade or buy the land and then?
So the DEC is not going to buy the land from the historical society anymore, it's Open Space Institute involved now.
Yeah, but that's, that's at least with the, the way Placid side of it. The DEC is still very involved in what's going on at Serenac Lake, for example, because of the, the station there not currently being in use and needing about two remaining repairs. So we're very much working with DEC on how we can coordinate our efforts to utilize that site for everything, from parking to bathrooms to different amenities. But I think here, we at least have a vision for what it's going to be.
How about where the trail crosses roads, what kind of signage is there, what kind of precautions so people aren't riding out front cars?
Yeah, that's a great question. So I think that the biggest area of concern that I have is, is crossing of 86 right before you get to Serenac Lake. And at the groundbreaking ceremony, I was able to connect with their representative from DOT who was there, but he's not with, is it area one? This, this is.
Region one.
Region one. So, so I have to connect with someone here to talk about what, what will be done to kind of make that a more accessible crossing, because the, the only change that I know is definitely going to happen is that DEC will work to make the crossing perpendicular. At, at the moment, it's at kind of a long angle, so you're going to be on the road for a longer time, and that kind of increases your chances of, of an issue. But, but also as the only people riding in access to the trail right now, that. Yeah, so it's coming.
It's going to happen, it's less safe than that.
Exactly. But right now, you, you really don't have a wide variety of abilities accessing the trail because of how difficult it is. But once we have kind of the grade given out in the Serenac Lake place, you're going to be able to ride it on just about any type of bicycle, all different ages and abilities, it's, it'll be wheelchair accessible. So we have to be able to think about the speed at which vehicles are coming through 86 at that point. It doesn't, the speed limit doesn't drop until about right there. Yeah, so, so whether or not it's going to drop further away from Serenac Lake or there's something like just the flashing lights that you can have at crosswalks that don't ask anyone to stop, but just let vehicles know.
Need stop signs or, or.
Well, and another concern is, is Station Street. People aren't coming down Station Street and, yeah, and they, they turn right into that development.
You're coming up a bit of a prow, and really over by the firehouse. Yeah, exactly, yeah, yeah. So I think that, I think that signs for the users on the trail to let them know that they need to stop, especially inclement weather and in the wintertime, just to let you know what's going on, but also I think for the vehicles to just, you know, you don't have to put in a light, you don't need to do anything, but just those flashing signs could be really useful to let vehicles know, especially in low light conditions, that, that someone is crossing right there, so just be aware. So that's something that hopefully we can be an advocate with the DOT to, to help implement something like that.
Clear.
Yeah.
Are there going to be other access points from here to Serenac Lake's kind of lawn for some people, we mentioned kids, where people can come on and get off?
Yeah, so I think that is something that we're, we're still looking at, where, because there will be, for the most part, three main, three main access points that we envision, but, but I do think that there is the capacity on the trail for there to be some additional access points where you can go from between here and Serenac Lake.
Where you're going quickly.
Yeah, that, that crossing, but, but that at present has limited parking, so.
And that's a long ways to go from Lake Placid to that access.
Yeah, so I, so I think, but I'm not sure there are too many places in between here and there.
I don't know whether there are any, goes through, has some access on Old Raybrook Road off, is it Prendergast Way or something is back in there?
Yeah, and I think that we're, we're willing to look at that, I think that the, the DEC is, again, kind of, it's, it's their corridor. And we're, we're, I think we are in a position to coordinate with the volunteer stewardship agreement, what would the volunteer efforts look like on the trail? And, and making sure that it has what, what it needs to kind of be a sustained, wonderful experience for everyone who uses it. But also I think, so like, that's a discussion, we're, we're positioned to kind of be almost an advocate organization for things that the trail might need that DEC, DOT might not really be aware of. People contact us with questions all the time that, that we'll pass along, and we can kind of be that organization to raise concerns about safety of crossings, additional accessways, additional parking, bathrooms, all of that, so. We're, you know, I readily said my, my contact information is available, so if anyone wants to reach out to me to raise this, please, so, so that we can make sure that the groups that are building, literally building the actual trail, have everything that they need, have all the information to make it a success. I think one of the, initially, like way back years ago when this first conference was talked about, I think our biggest challenge as Lake Placid is handling a volume of cyclists going from the train station, if you want to go downtown to the, you know, and Main Street. We just don't have the infrastructure in place at all to.
Or the room to put it there.
Exactly, yeah, so that, I mean, that's something that we're going to have to figure out sooner than later, when we're in other.
Well, the other thing that has to be brought up and sold is, remember it was going to be connecting to the pocket park, Chub River Park, behind Layl Lumber?
Yeah.
And then hitting all the trails that go through Lucy.
Over there.
Yeah, it's there, it's there, but nobody knows it.
Yeah, so, so the, the trail definitely does have a series of offshoot trails that, that are, you know, mostly mountain bike access right now that are separate from the trail, but I do envision at least being able to communicate effectively to use a trail if you want to step off the main trail. This is where you can go safely, but I think that, as, as you mentioned, access from the end of the trail into, into Lake Placid, a bit of a challenge in terms of the roadway, in terms of the topography of that road, when you think about who might be using it. I don't like going up that, right, always.
But where you connect to the mountain bike trails, you don't go up that hill.
Certainly, but, but that would be kind of a, not officially Adirondack rail trail.
No.
But you still want it to be something that's safe for everybody, but yeah, I think that accessing Lake Placid is, is certainly a challenge. You know, we're.
Be able to go through Serenac Lake.
Yes, yeah, so, so thoughts on that, like, we're, we're trying to talk to, you know, the businesses in Serenac Lake, you know, along, for example, White Flower that are not directly adjacent to the trail, but could benefit from the trail. You might not have the same conversation here, but trying to figure out, is there any, you know, are there businesses that could benefit from the trail? If so, how do we make that happen? Because we do want it to be a benefit to, to the village of Lake Placid, but, and we're looking for, for those conversations on how we can do that.
What's your timing in terms of completing the section between here and Serenac Lake, sorry to cut this.
It's okay, so that'll be September 2023. That'll be, that'll be the nine-mile stretch from Sadebo here to there. And then, then the additional two phases are to go from Serenac Lake to Blood.
Bloodwood?
Bloodwood, and then Bloodwood to Serenac Lake, and that'll be 2024 and 2025.
And you mentioned the surface would be ore, dust, and stone, is that something that a street bike could ride on, or wouldn't it be that good?
I think you could.
Okay.
I think you could, I, I don't know that I would like to do that for myself, but I think, I think, I think, I really do think you could. I mean, I, we'll be on it with a gravel bike and a mountain bike happily.
So certainly a, a bike that had just an off-road tire that wasn't, you don't have to have the big, because right now, I think if you're driving, you'd want the big bike.
Yeah, I mean, I did it on, I, I rode the full 34 on just a regular mountain bike.
That were your forms.
The rest, I had the right shorts on, but, but wrists were a little bit sore after that, so I think that fat tires the way to go right now for, for the whole thing.
Yeah, let's say that you start in Lake Placid, and then after a few months, you've got three miles done. Will people be able to use the portion that's been done, or will you be shutting it down while they're working?
So that is probably going to be a decision between OGS, DEC, and Correci, but at least the initial impression that I have is to be prepared for that nine-mile stretch to be off limits while construction's underway.
Okay.
But not during the snow season.
But not during the snow season, because construction wouldn't be underway during the snow season, yeah.
Okay.
You work with the group Bike Adirondacks at all?
I just had a wonderful interview with them last week, yeah.
Okay, yeah, they've been so supportive of that, and did new tours all throughout the Adirondack, so I'm sure he has a lot of ideas for you.
Yeah, we definitely want to work with them as an organization that kind of is a case study in how to do business as well, so we're definitely excited to partner with them.
Very good. Anything else, anything else you'd like to tell us?
No, that's great, thank you for, for being so welcome.
Okay, well, thanks for coming by.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
If you like.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you all, thank you.
Sure we'll be in touch with you.
Nothing on the street, thank you.
Anything else under new business? And under old business, we have STR update, and that's back to trustee Kelly. Just because you've got the biggest handle on it.
We are close, we are really close. It's probably a good chance the town's going to have to extend their moratorium, but we may be very fortunate and be able to keep ours. There's, there's one thing that we need to discuss one more time, only because I want to make sure we're all good with it, and that is South Lake Residential. So South Lake Residential is the six properties on Merrill Lake Drive and Beach Hill. There are, out of the.
Nine, isn't it nine?
Well, well, there's 20 total units that are in the village, that are in South Lake. There's 40 total, or 39 within Beach Hill, but 20 of them happen to fall within the village. Currently, there are nine unhosed permits in South Lake Residential. One of them.
In the village, in the village.
In the village. One of them being in Beach Hill, the rest all have Merrill Lake Drive addresses.
Well, I think one of them that has Merrill Lake Drive address is in Beach Hill.
Correct, the one that's right on the corner, right, right. So the town is allowing both hosted and unhosed in South Lake Residential. But they have a cap, they have capped their permits. Unhosted is a total of 165, they have 145, so there's room for growth there. I think it would be good if we were consistent with the town and.
I think they should change them.
Huh?
I think they should change them.
It, it's not a residential neighborhood, I mean.
I don't think it's a place, though, for a commercial neighborhood either. Right on the lake, noise echoing down, people that have beautiful, expensive homes there and they got one.
They're the ones who are resting.
Yeah, they're the ones who are resting.
They can't afford it.
Right, I know many people live out there, I know people that have sold around the lake because they didn't want the noise in the neighborhood the way it was. I just think it's prime real estate, it doesn't belong STRs, but it's my opinion. It's up to you guys, do you want to have a special meeting for that, or do you want to discuss it now?
Well, let's, let's talk about it, because a special meeting would absolutely mean that we're going to.
Delay everything.
We're going to have to extend the moratorium. I recall prior talk about this is that because that whole area goes village, out of village, in the village, then there's a screwy line all through there, that we should be consistent with the town.
It would be nice to be, but we don't have to.
No, that's correct.
I think we wouldn't be consistent with the town, because the town's at 365, and we would still be 290.
We'd still be at 90, but at least we would not prohibit it.
Gotcha.
Because they're allowing carte blanche, let's call it, and we would perhaps, based on, allow 90 days, which it currently is. Correct?
Yes.
It's currently that.
Is everyone prepared to talk about it tonight? I am, but I don't want to push it upon you guys if you're not. Like I said, my, my stance has been the same, I haven't changed, I just don't think it belongs there, and I also think that Beach Hill does not have a homeowners association, so I would call that a protected neighborhood. It has a beachfront association, but that's not a homeowners association.
But only a portion of Beach Hill is in the village.
I think they should be consistent with us.
The rest, the rest of it that's in the town is going to be.
If that's what they decide.
No, they've decided that.
I disagree with them, but, but you guys state your opinion, majority rule?
I think we should be consistent with the town, I.
So do I.
I submit as much as we can, I'd like to be consistent with the town.
I don't think the whole argument with making affordable housing for school teachers.
I'm not, I'm trying to make a nice neighborhood for people to live in, and I don't think by allowing vacation rentals over there in that stretch is.
But that's not an enforcement.
I don't think that's.
Well, it doesn't everything, we have to assume that we can.
You think that stretch is a neighborhood?
Yes, I know four people live up there, and I know a fifth that left because of the noise.
No, I'm talking about Beach Hill may be a neighborhood, but you.
I just think that's, that's another, I do, I just think that's an area that shouldn't be, that's just my opinion, I just don't think.
And I know someone who lives in Beach Hill now, who doesn't even rent out their house, but they think it would be wrong for us to take that ability for them to, to get a short-term rental away. They don't see it as a problem.
Look, it sounds like you guys are all ready to jump on with the town, and if Peter agrees with you, it's done anyway, so. What way are you going?
I, I think we should be consistent with the town.
And were you going the same way?
Yeah, I, I said from the beginning, I, I could go either way on it, so.
Okay, and it's done then, I mean, that's pretty easy, and unfortunately, would you like to raise an opinion?
You're doing a duck for cover.
Yeah, really, I know.
Take your pick.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, I'm, I don't know enough about the background, so I'll give that caveat, but I think, you know, the consistency with the town is helpful, but also I think, you know, I'm inclined to try to have consistency within the village as well, because I think to your point, you know, neighborhoods are neighborhoods, and it would be nice to, you know, make sure that people would have that flexibility regardless of, you know, kind of their income bracket, so to speak, or the housing stock, but, but again, like, you know, very uneducated people compared to everybody else really is capable.
Jackie, a question, what happens from the Harbor condos over to the cottage? Is that part of North Lake?
South Lake.
Is that also part of South Lake?
Yes.
So that entire stretch now would be open game for vacation rentals?
Has been.
Has been.
Yeah, but I'm just, well, but it's our job to see if you want to stop.
Then you get to the Merrill Lake Inn, and that's a PG.
Okay.
And the Harbor condo.
So in essence, all around Merrill Lake on that whole side will now be vacation rentals?
Which they, they are now.
But this was our job, and so were all the other residential areas, whether we want to stop it and turn the tide, but in other words, we're saying that's like Main Street corridor, that's a place you can go.
Yeah.
And that's what everyone wants to do.
But we're still limiting it to 90 days, and if there's a change of ownership?
No.
No.
You're saying that now people can go in there, Ulta, just like Main Street corridor, that's what the town is saying, correct?
Correct.
Or am I wrong on that?
Correct. It, it wouldn't be. It wouldn't be it wouldn't be a change of ownership.
I mean, I've got no point. And you're also saying new ones could go in there, correct?
Yes, yes, yes.
So there wouldn't be any.
Change of ownership, doesn't matter.
That's right, because they just apply and get.
That's right, that's right.
In essence, we're allowing that to no longer should not become a protected neighborhood. It's just like the Main Street corridor. You can go there, you can apply.
Yes. And the town is the same except the town will allow them to rent three sixty five and we will still have the ninety day.
Right.
I do think the biggest complaint I've heard is that people go in there and they've got parties going and the noise just echoes down the lake. But just my opinion, you guys have your opinion, majority votes? So at this point, do we want to consider that done deal so they can move on and move to a public hearing?
So let's talk about the done deal and the timing because the timing has gotten critical. The local law has to go to the county planning.
Correct.
The county planning, the way they currently work is a little bit different from what I understand that they used to work. So it goes to the county planner. That person then has to review it and send it to the Ways and Means Committee of the County Board, no, the County Board. And then if the Ways and Means Committee stamps it, it goes to the full Board of Supervisors. The Ways and Means Committee meets once a month.
On the.
And this month is the twelfth or thirteenth. No, because the twelfth and thirteenth is November or weekends.
Oh, so it's the Monday. It's that Monday.
The fourteenth. So we would have to get have the final version to them by the fourteenth. Maybe.
November.
Yes, which is a week from today. Maybe the attorneys can get it all done. They're not promising. And of course, you got Veterans Day is for some people a holiday. The last time we sent we did this, and there has to be a secret too. The last time before we did when we did this, it took the county twenty eight days. They have thirty to, I mean, if it's thirty, it's deemed.
That's after it gets through the other two steps. They have thirty.
Correct, so yeah, so if they take their full time, we would be bumping way up. And quite frankly, I don't think any of us needs the stress in the middle of December of how do we get this extended? Because you recall for it to be extended, we have to have a public hearing. We have to send pass the local law, send it to the Secretary of State's office and it's not effective until it's filed by the Secretary of State's office. That can take two weeks. And if we send it to them, I'm afraid that if you send it to them over the holidays, things are always slow then that if it doesn't get filed by December thirty first, moratorium lapses. So whether the county can perform in the time period that suits us. Now, the town has to extend because their moratorium ends December tenth. Ours goes to the thirty first. So we have two weeks roughly that we can play with. I think we're going to have to know if this if this thing can't go to Ways and Means on the fourteenth, there's no way because they won't meet again until December.
Right.
Then we should right away schedule a public hearing to extend.
We have to have the draft before we can it has to go.
Well, wait a minute.
I'm talking about the moratorium extension.
Oh.
We'll know beforehand.
Yeah, we'll know next week, I think, whether, you know, whether it got to Ways and Means, whether it got to planning or not. So we have some time. This does not mean that we can't hold the public hearing on the proposed amendment. We can do that in December if you all want to. That would be hopefully a joint with the town. But that doesn't have to be held up so that when you come out of the moratorium or just before you come out of the moratorium, you could pass this, then come out of the moratorium. You can terminate it at any time. It doesn't have to terminate because it's expired. It can terminate because you terminated. So when or how you want to have the public hearing on the new local law would also determine how long we should extend for if we have to extend. The town's got to have to make the decision anyway because they have to extend. There's no way they can pass this by December tenth. So you probably have to coordinate with the town board when you want to hold the joint public hearing. We need seven days notice in the paper. So you're probably in very, very late November, early December.
Maybe after Thanksgiving.
Now, you also.
Special date.
You would also have to have your final write up, correct?
Correct. Well, like for the public hearing, you have to have a copy of what's proposed.
And you will have that you have to have that by the fourteenth opposed to the county?
Yes.
So.
So we're going to know next week whether they were able to get it to the county for the county to act on the fourteenth. We'll know that next Monday. I'm just sort of warning everybody what it's looking like.
When you say they, you mean the town itself?
Yes, we've given them all of our edits. Actually, now we have one more and I'll do that tomorrow. But they're telling Emily that it would be a stretch for them to get things done.
Okay, and how about the other question of like Mark, I think you brought it up. People that are hosted, can we pull that out of this so that?
I don't think that would be a good idea because part of what the new thing is is new definitions. And that includes on, go ahead.
Oh, it's also the website. Oh, we were updating the website and when we took out corridor, it created a major problem with the website. If we could just wait and do it all together, it would be so much easier and smoother.
What do we do for people that are looking to rent their house for the World University Games? Whether it is or isn't busy, but what do we tell those people? How luck or do we have a way we can help them out?
Well, they should be able, I mean, I'm really thinking that. I don't know how long it takes to process an application and get a permit.
But you also have to market your property.
I'm just going to say how long does it take you to put it online and sale? And you can't do that until you.
I appreciate the problem with the website, but I also I don't work for a website. I work through the people here. And so if somebody's livelihood is at stake because they can't rent out the room in the house they planned on and they bought the house, then I have a problem with that.
But if they bought the house knowing that we were looking at the STRs in this.
Knowing that hosted rentals all along, we've never said anything that I don't hosted rental. I'm not talking about my hosted. I'm talking about the thing we've been encouraging since the very beginning so people could.
But there are new regulations, like you have to have it notarized. I mean, it's a different type of process now. You have to have proof. So I mean, it's it's not just the same old way. Obviously, you know, we would need to talk to Mike and to Gov OS. You know, we've instituted a lot more safeguards so that people are we are regulating it. I mean, I understand your point, but I mean.
Is there a way around this, Janet? We're only talking hosted, right, at this point? Are we talking?
That was all I was talking about was hosted.
Is there any way that we can make a local law for the fourteen days?
No. You're gonna have to, first of all, it has to be drafted.
Yeah.
Then it has to go through the whole county thing again.
Just for a fourteen day exemption, anyone wants to rent their public hearing?
Yeah, public hearing, the whole thing. We have fourteen day exemption to say you can do anything you want.
No, I do agree with Mark that we're dropping the ball for people. You can say what you want, but if someone has a house and they want a cash in on the games being here, it really is a time we can't figure something out for them. Is there anything we can do that wouldn't jeopardize what's going on in the future that we can help people out? Is there any thoughts?
Well, I have to think about that. You do have a change in definitions here that are going to affect. You've got, I don't know about the website that I'm just looking at the language in here. And if I'd have to look at the old definition and the new because if they apply under the old definitions, we've got new definitions, is that fair?
I guess you'd have the old definition for now with their understanding that when the new ones come out, they'll have to apply to them.
No, I don't think they're gonna reapply there.
No, no.
Once they get that permit.
I'm just saying that the new definitions will apply to them when they come out. Like I said, it's up to you to help us out legally what we can and can't do here.
I can, I'll have to look at that. I haven't looked at it in that light.
Well, how many are we talking about?
I don't know.
That's a good question, right?
I mean, if we're talking about one or two.
Well, you know, you've got the people who ask for variances, okay?
They're.
Two of those people that came to us for variances can get their permits as long as they apply and they ask. No, Sanac Avenue.
Right, but that's Main Street corridor. I mean, that's the entrance way corridor.
The other one isn't going to be able to get a permit anyway because right on McKinley Street, that Village Residential, so he can't get a permit anyway.
So it's the ones we know about.
Right, but I mean, other.
And actually, he could get a permit if he was going to do it while he lived there.
Right, he could do it. Well, well, then have them apply for a variance. Oh, I will. Have them apply for a variance. The hosted, because you're only speaking about hosted, right?
I would have to look at that. That's still, I suppose.
Oh, so they technically could still apply for variance to the moratorium.
Right.
Correct.
Correct.
And if they're hosted, there would be no reason why we would think like that.
Right, right.
You're so brilliant. Can you give that some thought, figure it out?
Of course, that's going to take time. I mean, because we have to have a we have to have a public.
But it's not going to take more time than extending a moratorium.
No, it will not. It would be a variance, that's correct.
It's a good idea.
So you'd kind of say, okay, it's likely that you're going to get a permit anyway, but they have to still apply. That has to be clear that you're granting the variance, but you still have to jump through all the hoops.
Right, fill out paperwork.
But under the new rules of hosted, how's that going to happen?
You can still have hosted in the local home neighborhoods, but it's unlimited.
Right.
Unlimited number of days in the residential neighborhoods. In the, that's the only place we're allowing host, well, hosted is all anywhere.
Right.
Unlimited number of days.
Right.
The only carve outs of that are, which is not in the current local law, but is in the new one, is that if you have more than three, you have to do that two for one. So that if somebody applied and got a variance and got a permit now, it wouldn't be subject to that.
We're talking hosted.
Is that part of hosted too?
I mean, you're not going to have three rental apartments, I don't think, in your.
Okay. Am I thinking wrong?
I guess that's a question Janet brings up. We've never talked about what if someone did go into an apartment building where they live there, call it hosted, could they have could they have seven vacation rentals in their house? I never thought of that. I don't know.
There's other things I've even done about.
Well, obviously, there'll be a lot, but Janet just brought up a good point.
They would have to be the owner.
Right, they don't they buy an apartment building, it's their house, that's where they live. Do we want to have a limit to hosted? How many you can have?
A rooming house, basically, at that point.
Well, we tried that once, but then Mark came up with that idea of two for one.
No, no, but we're talking hosted now. That's that would be not hosted. It was like basically properties on Main Street. They're not hosted.
They're not, but they could be.
They could be, right.
I mean, they definitely could be. And I still think that the two for one should apply even to a hosted.
Or we could set a limit, like you only get one or two max. I mean, that's a possibility also.
Well, going back, I mean, I'm sorry, it was it was your valid argument about.
It really doesn't make any difference on Main Street because you can rent three hundred and sixty five days a year on Main Street whether you're hosted or not.
Well, I know, but.
Except you have to have the two for one.
Right. And it's a business area, we're calling it.
Right.
So then residential area, if it's not, I don't see why we couldn't set a number of if you're hosted, whether it's one or two on your property.
Well, in the residential neighborhoods, they're not supposed to be apartment buildings. You might have an accessory structure and we've limited to one permit per property.
Yes, so hosted would just be one.
One, well.
In residential.
Yeah, so so the idea would be in residential, maybe there's a primary residence and a garage apartment or something.
Or something.
You get the permit. It's for one or the other.
Yeah, okay, I'm good with that.
You can't have, you can say, oh, this week I'm renting it. I'm renting this house and next week I'm renting that. No. Right?
Right.
I'm good with that.
Well, because the permit's different depending on the bedrooms.
Correct.
Okay, so what we're saying currently is that they could apply for a variance. Anybody that wants.
Sure, anyone still can apply for a variance.
Right, right.
And Janet, if someone does apply for a variance, we would set the terms if we granted it?
Well, the standards, the standards are still financial hardship and you'd probably be hard pressed that somebody would have to be able to prove that based on what people have said and we've denied them in the past.
So this isn't an option then?
I have to think about this, but remember, the standards are still the same. We keep the standard isn't, oh, when we change the law, you'll get a permit.
But we had always said that hosted was a way for people to supplement their income. You would think that they'd be able to prove that if they have a mortgage, that some people have been granted mortgages based upon rental income, correct? I mean, isn't that the way traditional?
It depends. If you get a residential loan, then now you cannot take that one and come into.
Into consideration.
Now you'd have to get as a commercial loan.
It may be their personal finances if they have.
Okay, you know what we're trying to do. You think about it like so. Okay, any other, any other things we ought to know about the STR? Really, by the process and the work shortage, it really isn't sounding like something we're going to have for two or three months, is it?
Well, no, no, I think I think.
You think all those agencies.
I think January is.
We'll know, okay.
By next week, we'll know. And then we'll have to schedule a public hearing too, perhaps. So you have to coordinate with the village board and the town board. When do you want to hold the public hearing on the proposed local law? And then we might have to have a public hearing to extend the moratorium. So there may be two public hearings coming up.
Okay.
They don't have to happen on the same day, date or time. I think the biggest one is you'll be away, right?
Probably by the twenty fifth.
Twenty fifth of?
November.
I thought you were leaving.
I was, I'm extending, pushing that back.
Okay. So I think we can't know, we'll know a lot more next Tuesday.
Okay.
And then we have to go from there.
And then if we do listen to the public comments and we change our mind and it's anywhere near substantial, we're back into redrafting another public hearing and that pushes everything. Does that go back to the county and all that again? Okay.
A bit substantial. I don't, I mean.
Well, I mean, we've given our opinion. We now need to hear what the public has to say, so. We'll find out. Okay.
It'll it's a busy busy time of year to hold public hearings.
Anything else, Jackie, or is that?
No, that was it.
Janet?
That was all.
That's enough, right?
It's all good news. And that just that just happened this afternoon.
Okay.
Well, not nobody's holding out on you.
No, that's okay. I get it. It's a work in progress. Anything else under old business? Um, under mayor items, we've already done a welcome, and thank you for your service. Um, also, just, I'll keep it really brief, but as you all know, I went with the World Union Olympic Cities. The trip was very successful, as always, they're very short, it's a lot of travel, but everything is packed in. We did get to go see the new Olympic House, which they just built, 144 million. I've got pictures of that. The, the biggest thing of that is the staircases. It's staircases like this, and they do five of them, to represent the Olympic rings. And it's kind of interesting.
I mean, when you say they built it, wasn't.
It's the Olympic committee.
The IOC building?
International, yeah. It's very environmentally friendly. When you go in, it is very, very well done. I mean, the meeting rooms have technician areas, and, uh, yeah, it's, it's impressive. Um, also, part of the Olympic, World Union Olympics is what they call smart cities, and the big buzz right now is called sportification of cities, trying to get people interested in sports. Yeah, that was the nickname, the word. Also, one of the things that they had was one-and-done events, where, like, they mentioned a group that goes running, and, and you might hear about that in high mountainous areas, where they might, say, have a mountain run here that might come, say, up Whiteface Road, or down the ski trail, and vice versa, something like that. But something that can be a one-and-done, because a lot of, what was brought up was event burnout as well. And the one-and-done events would kind of eliminate that problem. And as, as always, you know, pay this networking with the people that you meet there, and it does make good contacts for talking with other people. We did have a private meeting with President Bach, and he also spoke at the, um, the Smart Cities Council. And part of what he's doing also is trying to take the refugee community and get them involved in sports as well. A lot more in the big cities where a lot of them are, but we do have some here in the local area. And it's also, the other big thing about the World Union, of course, is staying in touch with the people that decide where future events are going, and with the money that's been spent on all of our Olympic sites, that's obviously going to be very important. Um, the other part of the trip, the side trip, as they call it, was to go to St. Ritz. It really is gorgeous there. And I believe that in the off-season, we're 2,000, 200 people, but we swell to about 10,000. Is that a good number? When the tourist season, Ironman, over there, they go from 5,000 to 25,000. But they've got the infrastructure, big hotels, a whole lot of people. And one of the things I didn't realize, but their, their bobsled track is made from scratch every year.
No refrigeration.
And no, it's, yeah, it, it was, like, here, it's, it could open up in the summer if you wanted, over there, it's just a grassy hill. And they build it from scratch. Very interesting.
Started by the Brits.
That's right. And everybody knows John over there, trust me. John Morgan. Also, their speed skating oval is out in the lake. So obviously, that's.
Probably global one.
Yes, they do. We also had a chance to go up on a glacier. I've never been on a glacier, that was very interesting. Um, full-fledged winter up there. You're down at the bottom, it's just like here, you ride the gondola, you get to the top, and it's winter. I mean, there are race camps going on up there, I, I've got movies of that. And it's, it's impressive. They did show us that the big glacier's all in front of you, and in front of us, there's a brown rocky area. He said 15 years ago, that was all ice-covered. That's all melted in the meantime. I, I gave you just a thumbnail sketch of it, but.
No sunnens.
That was the other thing. St. Ritz gets 322 days of sun a year on average. I was like, wow, I'm impressed. They, they must really get a lot of snow in those 30, whatever days it is that.
The snow in their body.
Yeah, maybe, they didn't say anything about that. Um, but that's really about all I got for mayor items. Any questions?
Did anybody get a response to the memos that went out last week to LP 23?
Did anyone get a response? No, no.
I thought we, I thought we needed to vote on all that today. I just assumed, I guess.
Well, they, they, you know, we asked some questions, we gave them some parameters, and I've heard zero.
I mean, when did they finally get the, the notification? Was it last Thursday?
No, we.
Wednesday later?
Well, no, because I said we should do it within a week.
Right.
So Wednesday at 8:00 AM, they had on their desk three.
No, maybe it was Tuesday.
It must have been two weeks ago, because then we talked about it.
No, we, we asked them to get us their plan 10 days ago on a Wednesday.
Right.
And then, to be fair.
You all discussed it last week on a Tuesday.
So I must have given them that on a Wednesday.
I think so.
And then there was a follow-up agenda on Thursday that Chuck added some things.
Right.
So.
They really only had three working days with it, Thursday, Friday, and today. All right, I, I've got a note, we'll check with them and see where things are. And if we had.
We shouldn't have a problem, maybe.
I was just gonna say, if we really had to, we could call emergency meeting and approve it, or just let them know we don't.
Well, wait a minute, I don't know what we have to approve, because some of it.
They were just.
We gave them what we would do, could do, and wouldn't do. And then we asked them some questions, and I know that Brad's got a lot of questions, because we thought those igloos were gonna be weighted down inside. I think he's found out, no. So he doesn't know what they do, if they put something out, then they have guy wires. We, we told them that on Main Street, we only had power for four, depending on where they are. They haven't come back to us on what's that. They haven't given us the plans for Clock Lot or Lower NBT Lot. We still have no idea what they're doing there.
We told them they could set up on.
We told them, yeah, I think, it's probably new to them that, that Main Street wasn't gonna be closed on the 11th, so we don't know what they're doing there.
We're just waiting to hear.
I did give them some deadlines, as you noticed, said somewhere the 15th. They have not showed us what they have for insurance. So.
So at this point, what you're telling us, we do not need to approve them, they need to meet our guidelines.
Well, and probably there's gotta be some dialogue here, but I don't, I, I think the dialogue has to come from the people who are gonna be boots on the ground. I mean, I don't know whether they're set up people or Adventists, people they're hiring to do it, of the igloos. I think we know, for example, the igloos come in not assembled. Who, who's doing that? How are they doing it? There is some concern with some people about the igloos and tents that may or may not be in the clock lot and, and snow load and everything, and wind. We've, we've got some information that those igloos are used primarily indoors.
Okay, no, all good questions to ask.
But, you know, we haven't, haven't heard a thing.
Jersey barriers on the street and sandbags on the sidewalk. What else can you do?
Well.
Hold them down, you know?
Yeah, but then there's the guy wire, so those have gotta be, ribbons are still.
Let's hope not. Let's say pile snow over the Jersey barrier.
Well, and then we still don't know 100% about this cauldron, do we? When they wanna put that in?
No.
We don't, no.
Nope.
Well, lots of detail to look at. We've given them our requirements, and it's time to have a talk.
But I think the talk has to be not with the planners, it has to be the people who know. No, I mean, I don't think the people who've been putting these plans together know the mechanics of how everything works.
Oh, the credentialing, whatever that was.
Yeah.
Yeah, it kinda sounded like from the emails I saw, they were expecting us to do that. Is that the gist of it?
Well, Chuck said absolutely.
Right, I mean, that's kind of interesting, I think, that, that's what I was talking about.
Which one, the, the?
They have, they have a transportation guy and a credentialing, and Chuck said absolutely, the department cannot do that.
We're gonna be busy enough keeping up with our regulars.
Right, and manning checkpoints.
So somebody asked me, join the university games, if they wanna, this is a religious group, if they wanna, whatever they wanna do. Is that, do they need a permit? That's what they asked me.
What do they want?
I don't remember giving out a permit in my almost 12 years for anything.
What do they wanna do?
Stand there and hand out literature.
They can't do that. If it's impeding people's traffic or anything. They have to stand there like this.
Right, that, that's right, bros, that's.
They can't approach.
They can't approach, they can stand there.
And they can't approach. They're aware of that. But do they need a permit to stand there and not approach?
No, but they also might need accreditation to get beyond the checkpoints, and how are they gonna get that?
So everybody needs to walk, bring in accreditation?
I don't know.
No, I don't think you need accreditation.
No, because then you wouldn't have any spectators.
Yeah.
No, but I think a spectator, you're gonna need a ticket or accreditation in some of the venues.
Well, yes, of the venues, but not on Main Street, but you are gonna have to pass a checkpoint. You are gonna have a mag and bag, you know, they will check you.
And then I think, I don't know what this, it is up at the Nids Park, where, I don't know if you get beyond another barrier to get in to have a closer look at the metal ceremony or not.
In your agreement, you had asked that they start sharing information with the town, and I mean, with residents. So Roost has scheduled another meeting with the Main Street merchants for the 21st.
October, November.
Right, but that's just the merchants, that's not the residents, so that they understand that Main Street's gonna be closed.
Well, I know that, and I, I thought it was a pretty good idea, that Chuck had, it would be really nice if a whole package of information could go out with the electric bills. So you've got one more month that would give people enough time to understand it, and that's December. Because January, you could get it from January, but that's gonna be a longer, half a week longer.
We don't know what the information's gonna be. I mean, I saw Betsy at the bank today, and she's, she's hearing all kinds of rumors. She is.
Who?
Betsy, whatever her name is. She lives in the Wanda.
Okay.
And, uh, she doesn't think she can get to her permit. Yes, you can.
Where's her permit? She's gotta get a vehicle access pass. She's gotta get a map.
She could park up top if there's.
But you still have to get a map, don't you?
Even for the top NBT lot.
Well, but wouldn't she wanna be able to drive up until 10:00 in the morning and drop off groceries and?
The only way she's gonna be able to get to the NBT lot is Hillcrest and down Marcy Road, right?
Yeah, you just have to register that you can get past that checkpoint. I mean, that's what it's designed for, it's people on Main Street, correct?
Isn't that right? The only way you get to the upper NBT lot is down Hillcrest and Marcy Road.
Yes.
You cannot go up Main Street and, um. So, and, and Hillcrest is two ways, but it stops at the.
Ground spot.
So to get to Hillcrest, you gotta go around Mayor Lake, come around, go up Sernick Avenue, down to Hillcrest, down to your parking spot. That's the only way to get there. The West Valley, come up Oneida or one of those, and go down Marcy Road.
With the information pack, are they also looking at sharing kind of opportunity as well as?
You don't.
That's what we, we oughta make it clear to them, they have to have all this decided before the electric bills go out, December 1. So we can do this.
Well, see, I think they don't have a DOT permit yet, man.
Didn't we find that they didn't have to have one in the, in the Main Street if it's a, an event?
No, they have to have the DOT permit for the whole detour.
Oh, right. Well, remember, we had talked before, we didn't know if people needed permits, like if something were out.
They do not, that came out.
Right.
That's, but the whole detour, the DOT has not issued the permit, because the plans are in flux, and they don't wanna issue it until it's done.
So who's gonna communicate all this to you soon? This is, time is urgent.
I will be very happy to have meetings. I'm gonna be able to pay for that. Well, and I'm assuming you'd be happy to sit in on that with me.
Yeah, but I, I think, I think it's time to talk about nuts and bolts, not, oh, we might have stilt walkers, or, oh, we might do this.
Yes, no, I agree.
And I don't, as I said, I don't know if it's the Adventist people who are gonna be, who Brad should really be talking to, or get details, because you and I talking to people.
Yeah, no, I agree. It's time to stop the wish list and make a permanent list.
And, you know, they'll be just, but right now, I mean, I always heard about those two parking lots, is who might be using them. We haven't heard what the installations are gonna be. There should be tents, okay, are they gonna be tents? How are you gonna anchor the tents? We don't know anything.
Very good. Anything else? Anything under Commissioner Reports?
The LPBA annual meeting's tomorrow at the Marcy Bar, 5:30 to 7:30, so it's the social, kinda. If anyone wants to go, the LPBA buys at least the first round of drinks, and it's a nice, nice spot to hang out.
What time is it?
It starts at 5:30.
Oh, in the evening?
Yep. The actual election is at 6, so you wanna?
Are you withdrawing your nomination?
I don't think I'm allowed to. And then, um, Peter and I have been going back and forth with Kimball about power outage for this week on Wednesday, from 3:30 to 9:00 on Main Street, um, the east side of Main Street, so they can work on some dangerous equipment that they can't work on.
What they're doing is trying, there's loops, loop, loop, submarine cable going into the lake and then through splice box. These splice boxes are extremely dangerous, they need to be replaced, hopefully next spring. The past few years, um, the department has had no time for it. Perhaps next spring, it'll be time. So, the purpose is, right now, the, one of the loops is disconnected from one side to the other. So the power's feeding from Park Side and from Merill Lake Inn Side. Now, if there was outage in between, like, say.
They wouldn't have a way across.
It's from Crowley's to the Wonders, the loop that's disconnected. If there was another outage toward the Merill Lake Inn, they'd have to shut that, all those people in between would lose power as well. So by looping, relooping this, then only that one loop area would lose power if there's another outage. And these things are, they're terrible shape. When, um, behind the Wanda, the wire burned out, burned, burned the power. That's gonna happen next week.
So when?
It's scary, when the guys are having the, they open the door, and they run, and then they use their log stick.
3:30 to 9:00, I learned.
It's almost comical if ones are dangerous.
And the businesses all know what we're doing. I will put it on Facebook.
On Wednesday night.
Yep, yep.
It's only for a half hour?
It's all they have to do is reconnect. They're not fixing it, it's just reconnecting this loop.
Okay, and you'll?
Yep, maybe, the labor's keeping me.
And maybe Lauren Yeats can. And I guess under Commissioner Reports, Main Street is officially done with just one or two little piddly things to do. Um, and from what I've talked to Brad, as far as the water plant goes, that's coming along ahead of schedule. They still will be just doing the half until after the games, and then they'll go in and do the other four tanks.
I don't know if anyone's, they had to raise the Marcy Road and drain another.
Again, again.
It's a half. Where they were working on it today.
We gotta put like, slow sign on Hayes, and, you know, before they get there.
No one's talking about Hayes being a problem anymore, are they, since they raised that one?
I think the Hayes is okay, but people are bombing out of Marcy Road, but now, I talked to a guy, and they said, people will be fine.
And I understand the problem with Marcy was there's a manhole, they just couldn't go below, and that's why they couldn't grade their road to be, that, that was part of the problem.
I wonder, those are gonna be full of sand in the spring, they're gonna have to be sucked out, all the sand they dump on Marcy and Hayes. Back towards gonna get it worked out.
Anything else under Commissioner Reports? Okay, um, nobody here. Any, any, any questions from either Mark or Lauren?
None for me, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Anything, anything from you, Lauren?
Yes. Is there a new board member at the table?
Yes.
Hello?
This is Katie Brennan, and she was appointed, and our signed, I appointed her, and she was sworn in this afternoon.
Just playing the tail end of Jason Leon's term.
Okay, um, I was hoping you could talk a little bit about the appointment process, and to what extent everyone was involved.
Sure. Um, the legal definition of the appointment process is that it's the mayor's appointment. But in this case, I did contact and talk to our department heads, and I did talk to all the board members. And then after that, with feedback from them, I did appoint Kate, with the understanding that if she wishes to continue with us, she'll have to start running in, about mid-January. Or mid-December, if you're going to be a party affiliation.
Okay, um, sorry, was it Kate or Katie?
Katie.
Okay, um, well, I would love for you to have my email, if we could talk tomorrow, that'd be great.
Sure, yeah, happy to, happy to get that.
Okay, I'll put.
I'll give her your contacts.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. That was all.
Okay, very good. If nothing else. Okay, um, if anything else, any other questions from anybody? Motion to adjourn?
So move.
All in favor? Do I have you on line?